We're ready to start the Prattville City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 7th, 2013. Ask that you stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilor Chambers tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we come before you tonight and we just thank you for allowing us to be at this meeting tonight and to govern ourselves and thank you for allowing us to live in a country that's free and we just, we praise you for that and we thank you for that. We ask that you help us as we deliberate and discuss the business of this city, that we would always do it in a manner that would please you and that we would do it for the best and betterment of all of our citizens. We ask these things and your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambers.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Called this meeting to order. Character traiter of the mighty is of tenderness showing the worth of a person or task by giving my undivided attention. This time we have approval of the minutes for City Council meeting April 16th, 2013, and special session April 20th, 2013. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion on the second. All in favor of approving those minutes signify by raising your right hand. Those minutes are approved. At this time, before I start to recognize any other people, we have, let's see, Boy Scout Troop Number 25 is in attendance. Would you all like to stand, please, and be recognized? Skip him a hand. And who would be the troop commander? Is he here?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, for bringing your troop down to see government in action. Thank you. At this time, we've got comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone like to discuss any item on tonight's agenda, please come forth at this time. None will proceed. The mayor is not here at this moment. We'll come back to him. We have a report from Councilmember Counselor Striplin.
No, sir.
Counselor Brown.
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
No, sir.
Counselor Chambers.
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes, sir. We had a fire committee meeting two weeks ago. Item number seven, hiring three new firefighters. This is an item that we are simply replacing firefighters we have lost, so it's no additional employees per se, so we would recommend to move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna go ahead and proceed and the mayor, we will get back with him. I'm sure he's handling something there. We have three items on the consent agenda tonight if it's approved. Resolution Number One to Men, Resolution Book 2013, page 044, to reappoint Horace Powell to the industrial development board. Resolution Number Two, to set a public hearing for a restaurant retail liquor license for Judy Elizabeth Ekman and Randy Joseph Ekman of Sunny Hill Prattville Incorporated doing businesses Fox's Pizza Den. And Resolution Number Three, to submit municipal waste pollution prevention program report to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. We have these three items for consideration for a consent agenda. Do we have a motion to place these on a consent agenda?
Motion.
Have a motion by Counselor Bowles, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. All in favor of placing these items on a consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. These three items have been placed on a consent agenda. Will be any discussion on these three items? All in favor of adopting these three items signify by raising your right hand. The consent agenda passes. Before we go into our regular agenda, mayor, you are out. Would you like to give your report now?
Yes, sir, and I apologize and I promise I will keep it short. I will keep it short and hopefully sweet. I just basically want to touch base real quick about City Fest. As everyone here I'm certain knows, we got off to a little rough start with the rainy weather and then it turned into cold and windy weather, but the skies cleared and the chamber weather sort of came out and I think it ended up being a very great, great event, thanks to our City Fest committee and all our employees who played a part in that. But also want to talk about the duck race, which is something else that they normally have for that. It's a fundraiser for one of our local, for our local soccer team here. That event will be, has been postponed till Thursday, May the 9th. As we all know, we had quite a bit of rain that day and the creek was sort of swollen back here for that. If you have time, get on our City Facebook. You'll see some pictures that we've taken lately of some, I guess, calling big fishing rigs in the Cooters Pond parking lot. The big trucks are there, the big trailers are there, the boats are out, out on the water. You can obviously tell from the pictures there. Sort of a pre-tournament fishing that the bass anglers are doing in this arena, in this area and so if you have time, get on there. 9:30 on the 18th, we're having our national kids to park at Upper Kingston Park. It's gonna be where we ride bicycles from Upper Kingston down to Pratt Park where we'll finish that up with a touch truck, so hopefully everybody here can grab a bicycle and come on, ride on down the hill with me. Mr. Wood, I've got a bicycle, your name on it if you need it.
Thank you, sir. You may continue.
With that said, item number seven is talking about filling some slots due to retirement and resignation and if you look forward to move forward on that, certainly would appreciate it and besides that, that's pretty much the end of my report, so.
Thank you, mayor. Anyone have any questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into our agenda this time. Orders Number One is to surplus one vehicle from the police department. Counselor Chambers, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the police department and is also to be removed from the inventory of said department. A 2002 Chevrolet Impala. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle on govdeals.com and that proceeds can be deposited into the general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor to accept this ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This ordinance has to have the rules suspended unanimously in order to be considered tonight. Do we have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules?
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. The rules of this ordinance have been suspended. Will be any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor signify by raising your right hand and this ordinance passes. Orders Number Two is to surplus various equipment from the police department. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the various equipment listed below are hereby declared surplus of the police department and are to be removed from the inventory of the said department. One JL audio speakers, one Jensen 600 watts power supply, three Pioneer CD player with wires. Be it further ordained by the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said equipment through govdeals.com and that proceeds be deposited into the drug proceeds. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chambers. This ordinance also must have the rules suspended. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. All in favor of suspending the rules on this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. The rules have been suspended on this ordinance. Will be any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor signify by raising your right hand and this ordinance passes also. Orders Number Three is to surplus various items from the police department. Counselor Chambers, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the equipment listed in attachment A are hereby declared surplus of the police department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said items on govdeals.com and that proceeds to be deposited into the general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Starnes. The rules must be suspended also on here. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion by Counselor Striplin. Do we have a second to suspend the rules?
Second.
Second by Counselor Boone. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended on this ordinance. This ordinance is open for discussion, any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor signify by raising your right hand and this ordinance passes also. Item Number One is a resolution to accept maintenance of sanitary sewer main and easement constructed pursuant to Resolution Book 2008, page 072, located at Gallagher Platt 1. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the council adopted Resolution Book 2008, page 72, on June 17th, 2008, authorizing extension of sewer service to the subdivision known as the Gallagher Platt 1 at the intersection of Upper Kingston Road and Moses Road, and whereas the Prattville Planning Commission granted final approval of Gallagher Platt 1 on November 19th, 2009, and whereas the developer of the said property must maintain the sanitary sewer main and associated easement until accepted by the City Council, and whereas the developer has maintained the sanitary sewer main and associated easement for a period of two years or longer and corrected all deficiencies presented by the Prattville Engineering Department, and whereas the sanitary sewer main and associated easements in said subdivision were inspected and approved by the Prattville Engineering and Planning Departments, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the sanitary sewer main and easement constructed pursuant to Resolution Book 2008, page 72, at Gallagher Platt 1 are hereby accepted by the City of Prattville for permanent maintenance. Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion by Counselor Brown and we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowles. Will be any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Second.
The record show we have one abstention. This resolution passes also. Item Number Five is to authorize the mayor to sign a release embargo in Hearthstone subdivision. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the developers of Hearthstone subdivision failed to complete certain improvements within the subdivision, and whereas Trustmark Bank is the owner of the first mortgage of the property, and whereas Trustmark Bank desires to be absolved of liability related to the development of the subdivision, and whereas Trustmark Bank is willing to pay to the City of Prattville the sum of $270,000 for necessary repairs in return for the release of liability as it relates to the development of the subdivision, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign a release of liability involving the Hearthstone subdivision upon the payment of $270,000 to the City of Prattville. The mayor and all other necessary and proper representatives of the city are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver or attest a signature required on any document reasonably necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion by Counselor Boone and we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Be any discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by raising your right hand? Any opposed? Do we get all hands? Again, all in favor signify by raising your right hand? Any opposed? Abstentions? Show two abstentions. Item Number Seven is to authorize the hiring of three certified firefighter paramedics to fill currently budgeted positions in the fire department that have become vacant due to resignation or retirement and annual cost not to exceed $155,721. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Point of privilege, you skipped number six.
That's it.
But I'll go and read this and we can go back.
Yeah, just read that. I'm sorry.
Whereas the City of Prattville Fire Department has need of three, to hire three certified firefighter paramedics to fill vacancies in that department, and whereas the City Council has adopted a resolution requiring council authority to fill vacant positions, and whereas the annual cost per employee will not exceed $51,907 for salary and benefits, and whereas the budgeted position in the fire department, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that upon, that up to $155,721 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring three certified firefighters, paramedics, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the FY 2013 budget line item firefighter department salaries, wages, workman comp, retirement health loan insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resource Department is authorized to impede the hiring process as budget. I so move.
We have a motion by Counselor Bowles. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Chambers. Any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Resolution Number Seven passes. We'll go back to Resolution Number Six. Resolution Number Six is to award an agricultural lease agreement for hayfield tracks to Raymar Autry for the wastewater department. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Wastewater Department has approximately 300 acres of hayfield tracks located on County Road 4, which it wishes to lease, and whereas bids for said lease were accepted through April 19th, 2013, and two bids were received, and whereas Raymar Autry was the highest responsible bid bidder with an offer of $5.39 per acre per year for said lease. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards the bid for the lease of the specified hayfield tracks map attached to Raymar Autry. Be it further resolved that the City Council hereby authorizes and empowers the mayor to enter into an agricultural lease agreement for said hayfield tracks with Raymar Autry, which will expire January 1st, 2016. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. At this time, Mr. Davis, you can't speak, but you can at the end of, not why this, but you can at the end. We have a motion on the floor? Any discussion on this item? All in favor decide sign signify by raising your right hand? This resolution passes. Number Eight is to release funds for the purchase of one Conicum Minolta KIP 700 wide format copier scanner printer for Royal Office for the planning department at a cost not to exceed $10,750. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for one Conicum Minolta KIP 700 wide format copier scanner printer in the planning department, and whereas said office equipment is available from Royal Office at a cost not to exceed $10,750, and whereas said purchase is a budgeted item for the planning department, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in the amount not to exceed $10,750 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Royal Office, and funds are approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2013 budget line item planning department capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowles. Be any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand? This motion, this resolution passes also. At this time, we have completed our agenda. We have one resolution coming from the floor tonight.
Whereas the City of Prattville received Alabama trust fund revenue in excess of the amount budgeted for fiscal year 2013, and whereas Sections 11-66-1 through 1166-7 Code of Alabama 1975 outlines the purpose and use of Alabama trust fund receipts, and whereas Section 11-66-6 Code of Alabama 1975 authorizes the municipal governing body to determine the use for said capital improvement funds, and whereas bond refinancing has reduced the amount of interest due on the 2006 A General Obligation Warrants in fiscal year 2013, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville desires to use the additional capital improvement revenue and the reduced interest expense to pay off the debt remaining on the fire training facility and the city hall roof, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the following fiscal year 2013 budget line items are amended. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville that the finance director is authorized to pay off the remaining debt for the fire training facility and the city hall roof. Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Be any discussion on this resolution? Since this item came up at the floor, it has to have the rules suspended, so at this time, we have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Boone. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. The rules have been suspended. This item is now open for discussion.
Would it be improper to stand up and clap at this point in time?
It probably would, but I would allow the finance director to come up briefly and make sure that everyone on the stand and the general public what is taking place here since this is coming from the floor.
Point of privilege before he does it.
Yes.
Officer Castle, will you please shut that door? The sun is blinding making a car out there. I'm sorry. I'll get my brand before he speaks. Thank you.
Will you explain briefly, quickly?
Absolutely. Every year we get interest money off of the state trust fund. It's divided by population. We actually got a significant amount more. We actually budgeted $150,000. We got $760,000 and rather than, there's certain things you can spend that money on. You can use it on capital projects or you can actually use it on debt service that was, you know, taken out to pay for capital projects. So instead of letting that money sit in the, in a bank account earned a fractional amount of interest, we thought it would be better to actually use that money to pay off debt we already have, which in turn will save a lot more interest. By paying off these two loans, we'll save $96,000 in interest alone and reduce some of the burden for debt service in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Does that help you, Counselor Bowles? With your applause?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All in favors of this resolution signify by raising your right hand? And this resolution passes. At this time, that exhausts our general item. At this point, we'll take comments from persons present now. Jose is asked to come up. Mr. Davis, you'll be right behind him. Anyone else, will you raise your hand after these two gentlemen and I'll be glad to recognize you.
At this time, I want to say that if we can come up with some kind of budget so we can buy a wheelchair so we can push our mayor, today's his birthday, I just want to say happy birthday in front of everybody. I mean, I don't think it's fair for the cities in Prattville. We have such an old man running the city. I mean, it's time to bring some fresh blood. I just give him a happy birthday.
Thank you, Jose. We appreciate that. Forgot to ask you, Jose, for your address and name. Do you have? She has it. Mr. Davis, if you would come up and give your name and address and speak into the microphone to the council, please.
My name is Jimmy Davis. I've been here at Prattville. My address is 295 County Road 4. I've been had a contract with the City of Prattville over 20, about going on 24 years for cutting grass. And we have, and I had never had a problem up until last year. Mayor McGrady, Billy Cott, a whole lot of people might not know Billy, he has deceased now, and George Williams, they came to my farm and got me and carried me in their car that showed me what they want me to cut and keep it, because they did not have the money or the people or the machine to keep the grass cut. And I've been doing it for the last about 24 years. And now we running into a little problem and the mayor, he called me, he said he's gonna have a meeting. He told me, and so I've been waiting for this meeting and so now, you know, I seen it, my son seen it in the paper. I didn't see it, said, well, you know, they had that, had the hay stuff in the paper. I didn't know nothing about it. And so then I came down and seen the mayor, but he already told me he was gonna have a meeting, so now he told me he's gonna have a meeting with us, but they got a bid on it. And I didn't know nothing about the bid until the last day I came down here. I don't mind bidding and I don't mind working with nobody. I don't have to do it all because the fields up there, what they was doing, the field was all rough and everything messed up. I went and scraped them up and got them so you'd be able to cut the grass. You couldn't do it. Up there where they got the ballpark across the road there, there was kids playing ball and I used to keep that cut for them because, you know, they were playing ball, the kids playing ball there, and then when they start spraying that water back there, mayor and Billy Cott come got me and Kenny and carried me up there and asked me to get it scraped and mayor told me, said you got a lifetime contract with the City of Prattville to keep this grass up. I said, okay, and I've been doing it. And now I don't know why that, you know, the way they're doing it now, you know, I found out about it and I called the county, and I got with the mayor here about it. You know, I'm not trying to take it all. You know, we can split it up, fine, but you know, like you're saying, down there around where I stay at, down there by where Bernie's at and cross the road there where they're playing ball, I've been, I've been keeping all that up and they're gonna take, wanna take it all now.
Okay, that item has been passed as you could hear tonight.
When the mayor said you, said you were gonna have a meeting? You still gonna have a meeting or what?
Mayor, would you like to address this or would you rather deal with this after the meeting?
Yes, I would like to deal with it more after the meeting. We talked briefly before and I've talked with the city employees sitting in as department head and I actually talked with, like I said, Mr. Jimmy before and I think the venue here is not the right place for this.
Let me just say this, that has been passed tonight. Resolution can be passed, it can come back and be placed again on the agenda. I would suggest though that you do sit down and talk with Mr. Davis. Did you not bid on it at all? Were you, were you not one of the builders to say was highest bid or responsible? Were you one of the builders at all?
I didn't hear nothing.
Were you one of the builders on this? Did you bid?
Yeah, I bid on some of it. I would like to, you know, I would like to have some, but I'm not trying to take it all.
Were you a builder on, on this right here? Did you bid?
Yes, I did. The mayor, I think that's his secretary, she told me about it and I had a bid and I did place one in the last day.
What I'm gonna do, we got a lots committee and we're dealing with lots, Chairman Starnes, Ray Bowles, and Laura Lee Boone, if you all will, we have passed this resolution tonight. If you would just get together with the mayor and kind of go over this and see where we are and see if there's any other thing that can be done. Thank you, Mr. Davis. At this time, that's all we can do right now.
All right, and mayor, I want to ask you, whenever you get ready for, you said whenever you get ready for the meeting, you was gonna call me and let me know, right?
Mr. Davis, at this time, I've placed it in the hands of a committee to get with the mayor and they would get with them.
Okay.
Because we're dealing with lots. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.
If you all would do that, we appreciate it.
What I'm saying, I would know, you let me know when you have a.
Someone will let you know.
Okay.
Anyone else like to address the council, please? No one else? Mr. Mayor, do you have any other comments?
No, sir.
Counselor Striplin?
No, sir.
Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes? Counselor Starnes?
No, sir.
Counselor Chambly?
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
No, sir.
Counselor Boone?
No, sir.
Next City Council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, at six P.M. Right here in these council chambers. That exhausts all our business for tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Sir.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? Meeting is adjourned.